So, now that you've settled in your seats, I'm gonna ask you to stand in front of all of the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, just as a preamble, we wanna get over some logistics before we start. First, we want to welcome some students from Burn Burton's Mountain Campus. Apparently, it's a class requirement that they attended town meeting, and they chose ours. Secondly, this is a town meeting, so it's an invitation to civil discourse. And we wanna put an accent on the civil. And one way to do that is to address all your remarks to the moderator, which is me, Kevin O'Toole. You're all witness to the fact that I wore my jacket, so you can tell one another that's what I did. Secondly, even though I might know exactly who you are, I ask you to, if you want to address the question and come up, except for just seconding something or making a motion, I ask that you come to the microphone and also take it from that pole and sort of hold it like, allowance there, so everyone can hear you. Because your remarks might be extremely cogent and great, but if no one hears them, it doesn't do any good. And we're trying to persuade people, okay? And also, you know, so keep, and also, finally, I'd say, feel perfectly free to question the, whether a particular thing on the ballot or a thing that is a motion tonight is the right thing to do. But I'd ask you not to question people's good faith and their beliefs as they opine on those motions. Okay? We're all trying to do what's best for the town, so I think that's the best way to run the railroad. Okay? So that's it. Legal voters of the town Dorset County of Bennington and State of Vermont are hereby warned and notified to meet at the Dorset School, 130 Dorset, excuse me, 130 School Drive, Dorset, Vermont on Monday, February 29, 2016, at the hour of 7:00 in the evening to transact any business not involving a vote by Australian ballot. And on the first day of March, at the hour of 7:00 in the afternoon, to transact voting by Australian ballot as required by law. The first meeting tonight will be the town meeting, then we'll have a short recess, and then we'll have the school meeting. So I'd ask you to all hang in there for the school. Just because we alternate from year to year doesn't mean that the school is any less important. We all wanna hear from Stephen Deere, Mark Tajani, and Roseanna Moran, everybody on the school board as well. Articles 2, 6, 7, and 24 will be voted by Australian ballot on Tuesday, March 1st. Polls will open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m. on March 1st. I also would be a little remiss if I didn't say, this is our town clerk, Sandy Pinsonel, who's been with us a number of years and does a tremendous job working and putting me in order. I know that. Right. And our select board is here for the town meeting. Our town manager, Rob Giotti, who is now a citizen of this town, in my review, and Mike Altadoll, and also Brad Tyler, and Henry Chandler, and Mike Connors, and Chris Brooks. So that's our lineup tonight. And maybe we're gonna say it later, but Brad's stepping down from the board, so I think he's had two stints, so I think we oughta give him a hand just for his service. It's a wonderful thing, you know, saying, "I wanna run for office and do good for the town, and I'm not gonna get paid much, and everyone will yell at me." It's wonderful. I've been not opposed handily for years. Article 1, to hear and accept reports, excuse me, reports of town officers and take proper action on saying, "Is there a motion to that effect?" And a second, Mr. Tyler. Okay. Is there discussion on this? You all read all of those reports. Well, there being none, the motion is to hear and accept the reports of the town officers and take proper action on saying so. Is those in favor of accepting the town reports, as printed in the town report? There's no typos, no nothing? Please indicate your acceptance by saying "aye" and "opposed." The ayes have it, the reports are accepted. Article 2 is by Australian ballot to elect the town officers for the ensuing year to be voted by Australian ballot. The officers to be elected are follows. I believe that there's only one set of contested votes, and that I'll just say that I think for the three-year term for selectmen, I think Mike Connors is running against Jack Standard. And around for two one-year positions, I believe it's Dan Frost, Henry Chandler, and Megan Turner. So you'll have that on your ballot tomorrow. Okay, I don't think there's any other opposition. Okay, moving on to Article 3. Shall the voters authorize the select board to borrow funds in anticipation of taxes necessary to pay current expenses? Is there a motion in favor of Article 3? Don, I have a living fear of this, Don Wachulla. And Will Stewart to second that? Don Haywood. I don't know why I did that. One year, I looked right at March Street and called her Meredith, her daughter's name. Never forget. Is there a discussion on Article 3? Yes. Oh, Davidson, just if you can come to the mic. Don't come to the mic, it's not worth coming to the mic. Okay, alright, is there any discussion at all? There being none, shall the voters authorize the select board to borrow funds in anticipation of taxes necessary to pay current expenses? All those in favor of Article 3 indicate their approval by saying "aye." Your opposition by saying "no." The ayes have it, Article 3 is passed. Listen carefully to Article 4, 'cause it changed last year and it's the same, but you wanna make sure you get it right. Shall the voters authorize the collection of property taxes in two installments on September 13, 2016, and March 14, 2017? Any tax payment made on the due dates must be sent via certified mail or hand-delivered. Payments not received within four days will be subject to 1% interest on September 17, 2016, and 1 and 8% penalty on March 18, 2017. Is there a motion in favor of Article 4? Abbott, Durban? And Kevin Sprague might have been clearing his mouth, but we'll take that as a second. Kevin Sprague. Kinda like Steve Martin, you end up licking the phone book, it's really good. Is there discussion on Article 4? It changed last year, it's a little... Larissa Lennox, if you could come to the mic, please. Stephen, could you kinda undo that for her, make sure she...
It's okay, I'll speak loudly. I just don't understand, probably everybody else does. What does 1% and 8% penalty mean?
Under state law, when, if you have tax payments due in installments, there is, when it's delinquent, it becomes delinquent technically only when the second, the last installment becomes due. So if you're, if you laid on your October or September installment, every month there's 1%, just interest. But then there's 8% penalty that accrues if you haven't paid your taxes by the second installment.
Kevin, I believe you.
Well, they tried to get my... Yes, Bill Bridges. No, no, Bill, I know, but they can't hear you. A long time ago, I remember Mr. Oakman, you know, five minutes, and no one heard. I just don't want that to ever happen again.
Governor, I just thought the confusion could be solved by inserting the word "interest" after 1%. September 17, 2016, and 1% interest and 8% penalty.
Are you making a motion to amend?
I don't dare amend this.
No, no, that's what you're doing.
I don't want to amend the amendment by inserting the word "interest" after 1%.
Does someone want to... Skip Dickinson, that is, the seconds of the amendment. So, is there discussion on this amendment? Bill and Skip both thought it'd be better to insert the word "interest" after the 1%. Is there any discussion on this amendment? Yes, David, but you have to go over there. If you have, I think, you anticipate having a question, just start making a run over there. David's helping, just...
I just like, I'm just saying, well, the 8% penalty is on, is it on the full amount or is it on the second half?
It's on whatever is not paid, as of that date.
So, 8% penalty on unpaid ballots?
On the unpaid ballots.
Perhaps we may need to include that. Sounds like it's deferred interest that won't be paid, so why don't you fill it out?
Well, actually, under Robert's rules, we have to sort of, you're amending the amendment. Do you wanna really... Okay. Alright, I think we're... Skip Dickinson, or Jordan, that's sufficient. Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment, and then we'll vote on the main motion. So, the amendment, I'll wait till we read the whole thing, but essentially, the amendment is on Article 4, inserting the word "interest" after 1% on the second to last line. So the last sentence, I believe, "Payments not received within four days will be subject to 1% interest on September 17, 2016, and 1% interest and 8% penalty on March 18, 2017." Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, then, those in favor of the amendment to Article 4, signify your approval by saying "aye." Your disapproval by saying "nay." The amenders have it. Okay, so now I'm gonna read the full thing, now that it's been amended, and we'll vote on that. Shall the voters authorize the collection of property taxes in two installments on September 13, 2016, and March 14, 2017? Any tax payment made on the due dates must be sent via certified mail or hand-delivered. Payments not received within four days will be subject to 1% interest on September 17, 2016, and 1% interest and 8% penalty on March 18, 2017. All those in favor of the amended Article 4, signify your approval by saying "aye." Your disapproval by saying "nay." The ayes have it, Article 4 is passed. Article 5. Shall the voters authorize the select board to take advantage of any state or federal monies available, including loan funds available from the Vermont Municipal Equipment Loan Fund to be utilized in purchasing equipment for the highway department? Any one wish to? Yes, James Hall, Skipper, and a secondary person, Rosalie Fox. Is there discussion on Article 5? I'll read it one more time before we vote. Shall the voters authorize the select board to take advantage of any state or federal monies available, including loan funds available from the Vermont Municipal Equipment Loan Fund to be utilized in purchasing equipment for the highway department? All those in favor of Article 5 signify your approval by saying "aye." Your disapproval by saying "nay." The ayes have it, Article 5 is passed. Now, Article 6 is by Australian ballot. Shall the voters approve the recorded select board's budget, official budget, as submitted with the town report? Again, it's voted tomorrow, but the select board would like to make some comments of its own. I believe, Rob Giotti is going to open that.
Thank you, Kevin. So, I think we'll start with, which is a kind of a post-year review and then a little overview of next year. And then Chris Brooks, our chairman, will go into some more high-level points about some specific items. So, 2015, for folks that don't know, in terms of some projects that we did, we repaved Mad Tom Road, constructed a new retaining wall, Lower Squirrel Hollow. Those two projects were done with the help of about $120,000 worth of grants from the state alone. Also purchased a tandem dump truck to replace an existing tandem truck. Emerald Lake saw about 57 or 5800 visits as part of the resident program at Emerald Lake. So for anybody that isn't aware, in the springtime, you can get a pass that'll get you day entry fee, free day entry into Emerald Lake.
I've told you there's too much space.
I haven't said too much.
Too much area.
They sing higher.
Jim Kingston thinks there's a whole lot of buttons, just start turning. Is that less space? Better?
Thanks, Jim. Okay, so back to just kind of an overview of some town projects. Again, we did some public works projects in East Dorset paving on Mad Tom, Lower Squirrel Hollow Road retaining wall. And that, again, was offset with some grants from the state. Regular purchase of a, replacing a tandem dump truck with another tandem dump truck. I talked, I just talked about the Emerald Lake State Park program that the town has, where basically, if you're a resident, you can get a pass for free day-use entry into Emerald Lake. And last year, as a result of that program, there's around 5700 residents that made day-use trips. Is that okay? Is it still here? Still not loud enough? Chew on it?
Yeah.
It might be. Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. In addition, the road crews is always doing great works out there, and they've done some trail work, including a trail header on the old Mad Tom Notch Trail in East Dorset Village. That's actually something that should be, over the next couple of summers, reconstructed by the Forest Service. And it's a, it's a trail connector to the ATL-T in East Dorset. It's a good thing. In addition to that, the town is working through the process to purchase the Gettysburg Quarry property. This will be done here in the next, hopefully, the next few weeks. And that's been done with about $450,000 in grants and about $200,000 in community support. So very little tax dollars, sort of in my time wrapped up in that project. And the Conservation Commission endorsing this has been the catalyst behind that project. So, a special thank you to them. As far as next year's budget, I will hit that really quick, and then we'll take questions, I think, after Chris gets through his couple of pieces. So in terms of next year's budget, there's some money in there for the Dorset Marble Preservation Association. That's essentially gonna be a kind of a continuation we anticipated last year, doing some curbing and some sidewalk out from the library. And that, because of scheduling and timing, that had to be put off until the spring. So there's a follow-up there. You'll see $6,300 for economic development in support of what our friends in Manchester supported on Saturday, which is basically taking the recent economic development study and putting that into kind of the implementation phase through the former Manchester Chamber of Commerce, which is now being called the Partnership. Also in there, there's funding to replace a wheel loader and pave about a mile and a quarter of Lower Hollow Road. And also partial funding for our future project of replacing the Route 30 storage shed with a little bit larger building that can hold salt. In addition, there's an article on here for the Playhouses Law. That's about all I have in terms of taxes. From one year to the next, the grant list is pretty flat. So from the municipal side of things, it's about a 2-cent increase. And on an expenditure point of view, it's about a 3.6% increase. And with that, I'll leave, Chris.
So, you know, I can't stress how hard Rob worked on the Owlshead project. I mean, he really was the one that pulled it together. You know, thank goodness, we've got a great conservation committee that took, you know, took the baton from there and made it happen. But Rob really, he deserved a round of applause for that, because he was a leader. So a few luck, a few larger topics for the oncoming year. The select board is gonna have a lot of work ahead of them. First of all, Manchester-Dorset Public Safety Study was completed. That was at a cost to the town of $10,000. We have a number of options for police service. The study's recommendation was that we should further review the possibility of a joint police force to serve both Dorset and Manchester as one area. Dorset is working with Manchester to develop a cost organizational structure for this. The bottom line, though, it's, you know, the Dorset-Manchester Police Department will provide a much higher level of service and quantity of police services for us. However, once implemented, it will be very hard to execute ourselves, and it's gonna cost considerably more than we're used to paying for our police services. The study recommendation from this public safety study was that Dorset and East Dorset Fire Districts should seek to combine the fire tax and consolidate services, either into one fire district or into the town of Dorset. At a time when a school district is being asked to look for efficiencies and consolidation, it would be really hypocritical if we didn't look at the fire districts. The fire districts are currently in discussion to do just these things. They're looking at combining the fire tax and consolidating services to save taxes. And the town is in support, will do anything we can to assist them. The main reason that the select board hasn't proposed any large sweeping changes to the policing in Dorset is because the option is likely to cost a significant amount of money. And it makes sense to see how the fire districts first remedy the, to duplicate services prior to the expanding of the town budget even further. As you know, this board has been so conservatively squeak when it comes to taxes. We really do try and keep that tax rate down. Further possibility or further example is that the fire district has expressed interest to work with the town to transition the management of the Dorset water system to the town. The graphs, if you've seen on the inside back cover of your town report, they illustrate where the town and fire district tax dollars are spent. It shows in a percentage form what we spend on each service. If you take a look at that, you can see the majority of our public safety dollars are spent on the fire districts. The Public Safety Study noted that because we have two fire districts, Dorset spends considerably more on fire than many of our neighboring towns. The Public Safety Study also recommended that the town served by the Manchester Rescue Squad work to support the organization to assure the model, that the model is sustainable. The town of Dorset will participate as an advisory board member to the Manchester Rescue Squad, and we will report back to you how the organization is doing. At this point, any questions on the safety study or Safety Committee study? If there is none, then I will move on to the economic development. At a cost of $2,500 this previous year, we entered into an agreement with Manchester and Bennington County Regional Committee to help create a Northshire Economic Development Study. The goal of the study and the study committee was to create an environment that allows people to live and work in Northshire. Anybody here want their kids to live here and work here? Kind of a nice thing. And unfortunately, there's a lot of folks who think we're a bedroom community. Sadly, I have to say that of the 3,000 people employed in Manchester and in Dorset, only 900 are from the community. So we really do have an issue with this. I mean, at this point, nurses and schoolteachers can't afford to live here. So we've gotta do something about that. And the committee has some, they've got some good guidelines that we follow to help us gain a little more affordable living for folks who are working in our community. The study makes specific recommendations as to ways that we can positively affect the local economy and the partnership, which was formerly the Manchester and Mountains Chamber of Commerce. And they will work to implement them. The town in the coming year is going to spend $6,300 to help this get off the ground. Tonight, you will have as one of your articles a discussion item on spending that $6,300. It is an advisory, but we really do wanna hear from you and know what you think about this. Finally, planning and zoning. The Planning Commission is working with the Bennington County Regional Committee to review the bylaw for technical and administrative inconsistencies. These are portions of the bylaw that are in direct conflict with each other, and these issues need to be sorted out. This process will rely on a professional planner to make recommendations. The Planning Commission will also consult with the planner to present public workshops and presentations to explain how the Dorset bylaw works for the town, whether the bylaws do well and whether the bylaws don't do so very well. This evening, you are going to be talking about and voting on articles. Those articles are gonna spend just shy of $100,000. This is a huge amount of money for, you know, for a committee that argues over $100 increments. $100,000 is huge to us. And as for everybody, it should be huge. I mean, it's at least a penny per hundred for you guys. Doesn't sound like much, but it does add up. Finally, I would like to thank each and every member of the select board. As with previous select boards, I've enjoyed working with them. I'd like to thank you guys for letting me work with them and serve the town. Thanks.
Just a point of reference. The Prudential Committees, the fire districts are separate districts. And be corrected if I'm wrong, but I believe that the Dorset Fire District Number One, they both call themselves Number One. I never really figured that out. It meets the May 9th, I think it's around the first Monday in May, and the East, the second Monday in May. And the East Dorset Fire District, I believe, meets the third Thursday in July. So keep tuned to that and attend those meetings so you can exercise your opinions at that time, best use of your time. Are there questions? This is something you're voting on tomorrow on the budget. Is anyone, is there a discussion? This is a good time to discuss the budget. Questions for Rob or any member of the select board at this time, if anyone has any? There being none, you're all tired from the Oscars last night, I know that. Okay, put my glasses back on. Article 7, oh, excuse me, Dorset, did you have a... Right. Okay. Article 7 is, this is by Australian ballot tomorrow. Shall the voters approve the exemption of property taxes for the Wilson House of East Dorset for a period of five years, 2016 to 2021? A 378 Village Street building and a half an acre, Village Street, to be voted by Australian ballot. Discussion?
My question, Mr. Moderator, is I did not see Article 7 on last year's agenda. So I wonder, if somebody could please explain where this, what the story is, where this came from? I think it was a $5,000 item, which I saw on some of the...
No, 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 this is something different.
No, 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 this is something different. Under state law, there's some organizations that benefit a larger, a general populace, and they get a general exemption. The Dorset Historical Society, the Library, the Dorset Players. But there's some that have benefited a specific group, according to the state, and they get a property tax exemption, but they have to do it by petition every five years. And so the five-year period has expired, so to retain that property tax exemption, the Wilson House of Dorset has to bring this up. So they did not have something last year. Five years ago, they did.
Can we know what is, what dollars, dollar amount this amounts to?
Yes, actually, there's an informational sheet. In the front, I think Rob put this together. The Wilson House of East Dorset is assessed at $538,100. So in next year's budget, that would be approximately, if they were not exempt, $8,847.09. Is there someone from the Wilson House who wishes to speak? And just say your name first. Julie.
Hi, I'm Julie King. Can anybody hear me?
No. You speak really like you're kissing that mic.
So I am Julie King. I'm the Executive Director of Wilson House. I've been the Executive Director since July 2014, when Bonnie retired.
Bonnie Lever, or Bonnie?
Bonnie Burke.
Correct.
When Bonnie Burke retired. And first of all, I just want to thank everybody and formally introduce myself to the community. And thank you for your ongoing support. I am a registered voter. I am a citizen of the United States of America, even though I sound like this. I am a resident of East Dorset, so I love living in this community and being a part of this community. So the Wilson House of East Dorset is a 501(c)(3).
501(c)(3).
Organization, which means we're a nonprofit. And we offer educational and spiritual seminars and retreats, both to groups and to individuals who are typically associated with 12-step recovery. And it provides an environment for people to come to where they can give thanks for a new way of living and a new way of life. And when I looked at one of the surveys today that's part of the package we got coming in, it's talking about all the drugs in the community and the alcohol problems in our communities. And the Wilson House is a place where people can come and receive support, education, training, and get help so that they can be free from this lifestyle and just live, you know, a drug and alcohol-free life. On our budget returns, we are breaking about even for 2015. And as a nonprofit, we're not seeking to make great amounts of money, but it would be, you know, very beneficial for us to be able to continue to receive this exemption for the property taxes. There are two properties, two buildings, which are part of our organization, and have the Griffith House and Library, which pay property taxes for that establishment to the town of Dorset. And it is just for the main building of the Wilson House that we're seeking this exemption. Other criteria, you know, things that we do there, we offer, the Wilson House is available for community organizations to come into. We have trainings that are held there by some of the recovery centers. The Southwest Vermont Council on Aging holds there, there are board meetings there. We have seniors lunches held once a month at subsidized rates. We offer the facilities at no cost to these organizations, and it's just a way that we can give back to the community and show our support for the exemptions that we have been receiving and trying to just be good neighbors. We continue to improve the building and try to unify the area of Dorset down there on that intersection. And we work closely with the other organizations and people in the community. Always try to work on making sure that we cooperate with our neighbors. And we have, with the retreats and seminars, we cannot have everybody there. We do provide lighting for those occasions, but it's very limited lighting. So people stay outside in the other establishments in the community, bringing extra business into our area. People also eat at other establishments, and they use the post office, they use the stores. And we just try to give neighbors and try to give back to the community we live in. On page 68, our financials in here, in the town report today, it does mention that the $1,000 that the Wilson House donated in 2015 was to the DMPA, the Dorset Marble Preservation Association. In fact, that amount was given to the town, and that was to be used towards either marble restoration and preservation of the sidewalks around East Dorset. So we continue to try and improve the neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And we know in the Rock Store, it says that the Wilson House annually gives lieu of taxes $500 to $1,500 in donation. And as you said, last year was $1,000 for marble sidewalk restoration. Unless there's any further discussion on that article, which you'll be voting on tomorrow by Australian ballot. Get back to the things you're voting on tonight. Article 8. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,000 to support the programs and services of the ROC, that's Bennington-Rutland Opportunity Council? Is there a motion in favor of Article 8? Oh, helpful, Sandy. Mr. Fox, Lee Fox. And a second, Skip Dickinson. Is there discussion? Is there someone here from Brock? Ma'am, if you could come over? Are you a Dorset resident, ma'am?
No.
Is there any opposition whatsoever to having this very nice lady speak on behalf of Brock? There being none. Say your name, please, and have that.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Eddy from Brock Community Action in Southwestern Vermont. I do appreciate being invited to the meeting. And we are on the ballot again, and I wanted folks to know how we do spend the money. We don't take anything for granted. I know there's, every time I go to any town meeting, there's more and more requests of taxpayers and town people. So we do appreciate it, we use it wisely. Mostly when we get an appropriation, we spend it on our food shelf. If you look in the report, we served about 36 folks last year from Dorset, and that could have been in a variety of ways, but it means a lot of those people came back repeatedly and did access our food shelf. So that's one way we spend the money. This year, there are several things which happened in Bennington County, which I'd like you to be aware of. You probably heard that Wheels for Warmth came down to the district. That is Lieutenant Governor Phil Scott's fundraiser to raise fuel funds, and that happened actually in the Rutland area, but the agency Brock received that money. So that relieves the pressure on tax sources for fuel funding, which we're very grateful for. Also, we are about to hire someone for the Jobs for Independence Grant. This is a research project that's being conducted nationally and in Vermont, and I will have a position, a person that will work with three Squares Vermont recipients, formerly called Foodstamps, to help them improve their vocational skills and earn more money so they can eventually be weaned off the program. So that's something which is also coming to Bennington and the county, and we're proud of that. We do provide services for the county at Orchard Road in Bennington, but also by appointment in our Manchester, when we have office space that's lent to us.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion about this article? Eddy probably would entertain it better than me. Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
A few years ago, the Select Board strongly suggested that each group have somebody to speak for it on these motions. So I applaud each group that has a representative. So repeating, Article 8. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,000 to support the programs and services of the ROC, Bennington-Rutland Opportunity Council? Please indicate your approval of Article 8 by saying aye.
Aye.
Or disapproval by saying nay. Eyes have it, Article 8 is passed.
Thank you very, very much. To go to my next meeting.
Another one bites the dust. Article 9. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,500 to the Bennington County Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, R S V P, for support of its activities? Is there a motion in favor of Article 9? Okay, Vicki Haskins. And a second, somebody? Carl Pfeiffer? Is there someone here from R S V P? Oh, gosh. Just don't make a wrong turn, ma'am. No. You might note, under Robert's rules of order, if you're not a Dorset resident, two-thirds of the Assembly is supposed to consent to somebody speaking. But unless there is opposition, ma'am, what is your name?
Sunny Leporati. Did you hear me?
Excuse me?
Sunny Leporati.
Sunny, unfortunately, you're going to have to speak, meaning, or is there any opposition to Mrs. Leporati speaking? Could you spell your last name for standing?
L-E-P-O-R-A-T-I. Yes.
Kind of like the car, I don't know. So, okay. It's Leporati.
Sure. I'm the Director of the Green Mountain R S V P program, so thank you for having me here tonight. And also, if...
Resisted temptation to look back at the crowd, because as soon as you do, there's a...
I was just like, also, if no one's here for the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging after this, I'm able to speak on that, too. But Green Mountain R S V P is part of the Corporation for National Community Service Programs. We're under the senior form. We recruit and match volunteers that are 55 and older to nonprofits in our area to meet community needs. Our focus is on healthy aging, and so most of our impact programs are around transportation, providing non-medical, medical transportation, supporting volunteers in the wheels-on-wheels programs as drivers. We also have volunteers that service bone builders instructors in the local communities, and we have over 500 people in Southern Vermont attending those classes. We serve Bennington, Windsor, and Wyndham Counties, and we're based out of the, out of our Bennington office. This last year, we had volunteers in Dorset serve over 100 hours, but in Bennington County as a whole, they serve over 16,000 hours. So it's all of our Bennington County volunteers. And that comes out to a value of $351,000 in $25. And that's based on the contribution of a volunteer, which is about $17 an hour in Vermont. So we really appreciate all of your support, and if anyone has any questions, I'm here.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Leporati? When I hear R S V P, all I think of is Lucille Faye, who's used to speak for this, ever here, the name Lucille Faye. There being no more discussion, let's stay right quick, because I don't want you to break a leg. Shall, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,500 to the Bennington County Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, R S V P, for the support of its activities? And to give your approval by, by Article 9, by saying aye.
Aye.
Or disapproval by saying nay. Eyes have it, Article 9 is passed. Article 10. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,600 to the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging for support of its activity with Dorset elders? Is there a motion in favor of Article 10? Okay, Jim Solis, give her. And a second, Lee Romano, I think, I just sent him. And discussion, Mrs. Leporati is here again.
Sure. I didn't know if anyone else was coming, so I didn't have their numbers with me, but we are sponsored by the Southwestern Council on Aging, so I am fully by them. And I do know that the majority of their services to people in the community are by providing, providing meals, whether it's through the Wheels on Wheels program, contracting for that, as well as providing, in the home case, management services to prevent people from, or connect people with long-term services and prevent them from leaving their homes and having them live in a setting of their choice. We also provide the Senior Help Line, which is available every single day for anyone who has questions and needs to access resources. So if anyone has any more questions?
I was asked to say that John Lebeckia was going to speak in favor of this article, but his wife Emmy was not, is a little under the weather, and he thought that was the best place for us to be. So he undoubtedly would have spoken in favor of this article as well as... So is there any further discussion on Article 10? There being none. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,600 to the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging for support of its activities with Dorset elders? If you're in favor of Article 10, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Or disapproval by saying nay. Eyes have it, Article 10 is passed. Thank you. Be careful. Okay. Article 11. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,600, excuse me. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $750 for the support of the Center for Restorative Justice Program? Is there a motion in favor of that? Wait, Clarissa Lennox. And Ellen, are you seconding that motion? Want to second it just to help me out? Sure, I'm alone, second second. If you look in the book and you think your group is coming up next, there's no reason not to get near that, rock your phone out.
Then you're learning how to have a second motion, too. Okay, Ellen Malone.
Remember, resisted temptation to look back.
I, Ellen Malone, I'm taking on behalf of the Center for Restorative Justice. They are obviously acting for $750. Last year, I explained how the Reparative Board panel works, and that was sitting down with some people who have been required to talk to us by virtue of conviction and a sentence. And so this is a, people that have been through the courts, and we help them think about fixing up their thinking a little bit, what they can do to make the victim whole, as well as to change their behavior in the future. So it's really, it's a great opportunity. Majority, I have to say, supermajority on that board are Dorset residents, a couple of which are here today. So Dorset is a big voice in dealing with offenders. I switched your word. Anyway, the, I thought this time I would just read several of the programs, the names, the programs, rather than talk at length. The programs are all based on the principle of restorative justice. It's a truancy program, there's a court diversion program that Barbara Powers used to speak to each year, a youth substance abuse safety program, which is when a minor gets in difficulty, you know, gets ticketed for alcohol, it's a program they have to go through. There is a DLS diversion, that's driving with license suspended, diversion program that they offer, youth support services, and in particular, a juvenile restorative justice program, just like the adult one I described. Reparative, well, that's the Reparative Board. The Victim Impact Education Program, this is kind of interesting. Many DUI, people that are DUI, convicted DUI, are required to attend a program offered by this group, which requires them to listen to people that have been the victims of drug driving events. And so they'll listen to someone who's come to explain why their mother was killed or whatever it was, and it's very, very impactful. The Community Reentry Programs for offenders who've been incarcerated, that's only some of the programs they offer. It's a very worthwhile project. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a number of years, you might recall, but she was a Superior Court Judge for many many years. So Article 11, if there's no further discussion. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $750 for the support of the Center for Restorative Justice Program? Those in favor of Article 11 signify... Those in favor of Article 11 signify your approval by saying "aye."
Aye.
Your disapproval by saying "nay." The ayes have it, Article 11 is passed. And sir, this is reputed, isn't it? Aren't you next? All right. Shall, Article 12. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,000 to support the operations of the Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless? Is there a motion in favor of Article 12? Okay, Sally Gibby, and Mrs. Longinger. Jan.
Virginia.
No.
Virginia.
Virginia. Oh, shoot. I got the long end. Yes, Sally Gibby's here. She's next to her husband. She decided to sit next to her husband. Okay, sir, if you could introduce yourself, and you're taller than that mic, so maybe... No, no, just pull it out.
Okay, is that all right?
Like Perry Como. Is there any opposite... What is your name, sir?
My name is Chris Oldham. I'm the Executive Director for Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless.
Chris Oldham?
Oldham.
Is there any opposition to Mr. Oldham speaking? Because he's not from this parts. Oldham, O-L-D-H-A-M?
It looks like old ham.
You said it, okay.
I've been here my whole life. And sir, thank you very much for inviting us to your town meeting. I love living in a state where the town meeting is active, and I especially love seeing a group of young people here. I'm speaking on behalf of the Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless. I am the new Director, and one of the things that I really want to impress, I'm glad I can kind of take this with me, because I don't like either the less flattering side of me, but anyway, we are an operation that facilitates new beginnings for homeless families and individuals. Last year, we helped 400 homeless people in Bennington County. Forty-five percent of them were in fact children, unfortunately. A lot of what I do when I speak with groups, and I've been spending a lot of time in Dorset, thanks to Dorset Church, and Sally Gibby, and a few others, we have four programs out of three facilities, and they all are in Bennington, the town of Bennington. We have the Good Shepherd Shelter. By day, it's a warming shelter, and what that means is that people can come in off the street, utilize our food pantry, take a shower, use our computers, meet with case managers, just get warm, and get the services that they need. By night, it's an emergency shelter, overnight, so we have up to 10 people a night. The hardest part of our job, unfortunately, is to turn people away, especially when it's frigid, but we turn away between nine and 11 people a night at the Shepherd. So, one of the things that we're going to be embarking on in this year is to find a way to expand our current program. I also want people, when I speak to groups, to understand that the concept of a homeless shelter comes with stigma, and it's important for us to remember that the type of homelessness that we see in Bennington County is not really the type that you see in New York City, although we do have several people living in our campgrounds and in their cars, but we have a lot of families who are from the area. I think we're serving, we've served 22 households in the Northshire this year alone, and I expect to see that number almost double or even triple with the way things are right now. We also have the Thatcher House, which is a family shelter. We hold eight households at a time. That is a short-term transitional program. That means that they're staying there between 90 and 120 days. While they're there, they're getting counseling, budget counseling, credit repair counseling, nutrition counseling. This is a program that will facilitate a new beginning for these households, and when they graduate our program, hopefully, if all goes well, they'll be able to sustain permanent housing. We don't want to see them coming back. A lot has changed in this past year with the Coalition, and I really urge you to seek me out. I would really love to stay afterwards, but I'd like to attend the meeting if I have anything as well. But like I said earlier, I spend a lot of time up here. The Dorset Church has adopted one of the rooms at the Thatcher House, and that means they are supporting a family that goes in there. Right now, the Dorset Room is what we're calling it, is housing a single, or, there's a young couple, 23 and 24 years old, with a one-year-old child. Right now, we have about nine children staying at the shelter, but if all goes well, at the end of the program, we'll be able to get them housed. The problem that we, that we see is the 20 families that are trying to get into the homeless shelter. So that is a reason why we ask the towns of Bennington County for an allocation each year. And real quickly, the last program that we have is a new program that starts here in a couple of months. It's called Unlocking Recovery. It is a long-term transitional housing complex that will hold up to four homeless families who are in recovery at a time. We're really excited to roll this program out. It's desperately needed in this community. We'll be dealing with folks who are dealing with drug and alcohol addictions, who are trying to maintain sober lifestyle. However, when you're homeless, it's that much harder to maintain a sober lifestyle. So this program will keep the family together. Is this on?
You just have to get really close. Here you go.
So the idea is to keep the families together, support their sobriety, and in an 18-month period, they should be clean and they should be able to stay in permanent housing. So please reach out to us. We are not just a homeless shelter, we are a rehabilitation program that is helping folks get back on their feet who have seen rough times. We're also seeing, by the way, not just addicts and alcoholics, because I know that's a stigma. We see veterans. We see people who are held captive by mental illness. We see victims of domestic violence who are escaping a terrible situation, and we see several disabled and groups and children. So please contact us, and you'll see a lot more of me. I plan on spending more time in the Northshire, because I think it's really important for everyone in the county to know we exist and what we do. Thank you very much.
Article 12. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,000 to support the operations of the Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless? Indicate your approval of Article 12 by saying "aye."
Aye.
Disapproval by saying "nay." The ayes have it, Article 12 is passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would counsel people again, you know, resist that temptation. I know you're normally used to speaking to a crowd. As soon as you do that, you know, the voice fades of the microphone. Okay? Article 13. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $500 for the support of Project Against Violent Encounters, PAVE, for its support of Dorset residents? Is there someone making a motion in favor of Article 13? Sheila Childs? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay. And Dave, pardon you. Were you scratching your head or seconding that motion? So, needs a second. Okay, is there someone to speak? So the person who's going to speak for Neighbor to Neighbor, they might, you know, saddle up and sit up there, so they're ready to go. There he is. Just pick it up. And ma'am, you're not from Dorset?
I am not, no.
And what is your name?
Lauren Wilcox.
Lauren Wilcox. Is there any opposition to Lauren speaking tonight on behalf of PAVE? There being none.
So, PAVE provides advocacy services for victims of domestic, sexual violence, stalking, dating violence for Bennington County. We've served a little over 600 men, women, and children this year in that capacity. We've served, directly served, eight Dorset residents and provided over 40 hours of advocacy services for those residents. That includes case management, safety planning, emergency housing, economic empowerment, and emergency financial assistance.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Wilcox or about PAVE or Article 13? There being none? Thank you. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $500 for the support of Project Against Violent Encounters, PAVE, for the support of its Dorset residents? Support of the Dorset residents. All those in favor of Article 13 indicate your approval by saying "aye."
Aye.
Your disapproval by saying "nay." The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Ms. Wilcox.
Thank you.
Article 14. Shall the voters... No, 14, it's just there's a word that doesn't belong. The "of" seems out of place. Shall the voters of appropriate, I think they meant Dorset, appropriate the sum of $750 to support Neighbor to Neighbor, a home-based caregiving program? Is there a motion in favor? Ellen Wilcox, and Tracy's last, seconding that? Ellen Malone was the first, and Tracy's last name, starring... Okay, here's a Y, I think. Article 14.
Ellen Malone speaking, again. The program Neighbor to Neighbor is truly a local program. It's a program that was started here, and we're proud of it. Now, 14 years old, our first long-term Director, just retired, Kate Cos, who's here tonight, and a Dorset resident. And that's the comment, Dorset resident. Interestingly, of the 74 folks that are visited by Neighbor to Neighbor volunteers, of them, the total from Dorset is 11. There are 17 volunteers from Dorset who visit with these folks, and when I say "visit," it depends on, they build a relationship, it's really, it's a love process. They become a friend to the person who is the care recipient, and if the person needs to go shoe shopping, they might do that with them, might take them out for a ride, might some of them play cards. I mean, it just really depends on the needs of the individual, and it does assist folks with social contact that's necessary to keep them happy and healthy at home, as opposed to having to go up to a facility. So that's pretty much it. We have a new Director, Philip O'Callaghan, who is wonderful, and I look forward to, anybody who wants to volunteer to be Neighbor to Neighbor volunteer, we need them. So please, if you're interested, speak to me or to one of the other Neighbor to Neighbor people who are here, Barbara, for example, Dick Dickinson, Barbara Howland, everybody there, places, all. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, an organization across Henry Chandler and I want to address some people.
Woo-hoo! And you look great.
Shall the voters of Dorset appropriate the sum of $750 to support Neighbor to Neighbor, a home-based caregiving program? All those in favor of Article 14 indicate your approval by saying "aye."
Aye.
Your disapproval by saying "nay." The ayes have it. Article 14 has passed. Article 15. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $7,500 to the Dorset Historical Society to support its activities and continued efforts to serve as a cultural resource to our community? Is there a motion in favor of Article 15? Terry Tyler, and a second? A second? Mr. Squire, Roger Squire. Mr. Cave, you live in Dorset, right?
I live in Dorset, yeah.
But why don't you pull it up, Perry Como, and speak right into that mic.
The Dorset Historical Society report is on page 30, and it summarizes our contributions to the community of, excuse me, 2015 and our plans for 2016. I'm not going to read all of those to you. It's free, and you can read it. Also, our winter-spring newsletter came out, was nailed with the grand list about a week ago. It has a lot more information in it about our activities, and I have a few extra copies here if someone didn't receive it. I'm more than happy, as soon as we're finished here, to give you one. Finally, since we're talking about history, I'd just like to remind you that Friday, this Friday, the 4th of March, is the 225th anniversary of Vermont becoming the 14th state of the Union. And to celebrate that, we invite you all to come to my house between noon and 3:00 PM, and we have a birthday cake. I need to answer questions.
Is there a discussion on Article 15? For Mr. Cave? There being none?
Jonathan, tell us who he was.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm John Cave. I thought I told you. I live in Dorset.
Okay, so Article 15. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $7,500 to the Dorset Historical Society to support its activities and continued efforts to serve as a cultural resource to our community? Those in favor of Article 15 signify your approval by saying "aye."
Aye.
Your disapproval by saying "nay." The ayes have it. Article 15 is passed. Article 16. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $850 for the support of Bennington Area Habitat for Humanity? And is there a motion made by Ruth Stewart? I knew that she was doing that. And Rosalie Fox. Anyone else can ever chime in for a second of emotion? Get your name in the town report.
Hi, I'm Ruth Stewart, and I am a member of the Board of the Bennington Area Habitat for Humanity affiliate, as are five other community members from Dorset. In addition to page, the information's on page 31, I kind of want to do a little PR here. In June, we did make two major transitions to our affiliate. Our longtime team leader, Dick Malley, retired, and we have welcomed Susan Summers as our new Executive Director. And also, the Shire's resale store relocated to 51 Memorial Avenue, which is across from MEMS. This is a store that accepts, it's a donation-based store, the proceeds of which support the activity of our affiliate.
That's where Evans was, right?
Excuse me?
That's where Evans was?
It's where Manchester Journal Evans Building was, yes, behind, or next to the Rite Aid, or Rite Aid, or behind, anyway, that's where it is. But we are a donation-based store, and we are actively seeking donations, so if anyone is doing a little spring cleaning or downsizing, please give us a call. I actually am the donations coordinator, so my number is in the book. We will be dedicating our 20th Habitat Build this coming Sunday at 3:30 at 200 Jennifer Lane. It is the eighth house that we have built on Jennifer Lane, and the public is invited to come and see a house that was built with love, dedication, volunteerism, and donations. And lastly, we are positioned to start building two houses, one in Bennington on North Branch Street. This is going to be a six-house development, and in Manchester, we're continuing to build on Jennifer Lane. And again, we are actively seeking qualifying applicants for, to become homebuyer partners for the homes that we build. One of our big challenges is trying to find people that are qualified to occupy Habitat Houses. And I would be certainly glad to answer any questions about Bennington Area Habitat for Humanity after the meeting or between meetings or whatever. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions now? Rosalie, if you could come over?
Hi, I'm Rosalie Fox, and I don't have questions for Ruth, because I see Ruth each week as she comes into the Habitat Store with marvelous donations from our area residents, and I help to reset the store and hopefully make it attractive for folks to come in and buy. But I do want to add to Ruth the fact that the donations we see can be monetary, but we're looking for furniture, gently, beautifully-used furniture of all kinds. We're looking for household appliances in good condition. We're looking for building supplies... We're looking for building supplies, no soft goods. So I just wanted to add to Ruth's comments that the support that we would give today in voting $850 for Bennington Area Habitat for Humanity is certainly supplemented by your generosity, whether it's downsizing or getting some fresh new furniture or whatever. So I want to thank you very much for hopefully a positive vote.
Unless there's some further discussion. Article 16 is shall the voters appropriate the sum of $850 for the support of the Bennington Area Habitat for Humanity? All those in favor of Article 16 indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
And disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it. Article 16 is passed. Article 17. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $40,000 for the Dorset Nursing Association for support of its services provided to Dorset residents? Is there a motion in favor, Terry Tyler? And a second, Megan Turner? Is there discussion? Someone from Dorset Nursing? Or someone to speak for Dorset Nursing? I believe Mr. Tyler. I know.
Shortcore.
He had you on a short leash. I never thought I'd say that.
Helen's been doing that for 60 years, but thank you. I'm here to speak for the Dorset Nursing Association. You are looking at a true artifact because I was one of the founders of Dorset Nursing Association. I think I'm the only one left alive. So they do good work. This is an ongoing support. We are very grateful for the ongoing support of the town in Dorset. And I'm asked by the head of Radnor.
Kevin, just pull the tape on the floor.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. I guess probably the best way to tell you about the Nursing Association is if any of you have had need of a nurse in the last year, you'll know how valuable they are and how quick they are to respond. We are part of Radnor, which is the Rockland Area Nursing Association out of Rockland. And we have the building here in Dorset, in South Dorset, which was kindly left to us. I'm sorry, Mel. Here, I'll hold. You sit down. Older people should sit. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. It's pretty well stated here in the town report. And you've had more than enough here this evening. So we would appreciate your continued support of the Dorset Nursing Association. I might add that money raised here stays in Dorset. Even though we are part of an organization that is in Rockland, money raised here stays here.
Is there any discussion or questions for Terry for Dorset Nursing? Abbott Duran, maybe stay put there. Terry? Abbott's got a question, so you might want to stay there so you can answer.
The only question I have is it's not... At least the way I'm reading the numbers, it's not clear to me. Many of the VNA services are supported by Medicare and by insurance. So I don't see in these numbers those dollars coming in. I see contributions and other dollars coming in, but I don't see how much comes in from insurance. And I would think that when you're doing your revenue, you do your expenses, you do your revenue, and that would be a big chunk of their revenue, I would think.
I didn't look at that particular figure, and I'm not even sure that it's in there. But as I said before, we are part of Radnor. Can you hear this?
I never thought I'd say that. You couldn't be her.
No respect for the elderly. I don't have a direct answer to you why those figures aren't in there. There probably are, but not specifically. No medical operation, hospital, or nursing association can operate without funds from Medicare and Medicaid. Some of the people, not me, are not old enough to get Medicare or poor enough to get Medicaid. I'm not sure how it all works, but I'll see that there's something in there next year for you. I mean, up here, but the figures will be. If you're not old enough to get Medicare, no one in this place is.
This is what friends are for. Okay, unless there's some further discussion. Article 17. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $40,000 for the Dorset Nursing Association for support of its services provided to Dorset residents? All those in favor of Article 17 indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
And your disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it. Article 17 is passed. Article 18. Shall the voters appropriate... They only get half cut. They only say half cut. Shall the voters appropriate the sum... Excuse me. Appropriate the sum of $2,500 to the East Dorset Cemetery Association for the care and maintenance of the cemetery? Is there a motion in favor of Article 18? Ruth Stewart? And a second, Carl Pfeifer? Is there someone here to speak? Mr. Beebe? The younger Mr. Beebe? Doug Beebe?
Again, I'd like to thank the town very much for their support helping to take care of the cemetery. We run on a very small budget. We use a lot of volunteers, and this money is greatly needed. My report, as I get in here, I have two copies. If anybody's prepared to report, if anybody wants one.
Is there any discussions or questions to Mr. Beebe? Who probably does a lot of the mowing himself, as far as I know. Article 18. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $2,500 to the East Dorset Cemetery Association for the care and maintenance of the cemetery? Indicate your approval of Article 18 by saying aye.
Aye.
And disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it. Article 18 is passed. Thank you. Article 19. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $20,000 to the Dorset Village Library for the support of its services provided to Dorset residents? And since he's walking up here, I'm going to say this motion is made by Al Lindsay. Right?
Sure.
Sure. Good, good, good. And second, by John Cave. Mr. Lindsay?
Hi, I'm a resident taxpayer and a volunteer member of the board and service treasurer of the library. So we're very grateful for the appropriation that we get from the town. This will be the third year, and it accounts for about 13% of our operating budget. 20% of our budget is raised by the library itself through different activities. And we're also very, very fortunate, or the town's very fortunate, that we have an endowment that supports right now about 67% of our budget. So this year, we're going to use about 6.5% of our endowment to support our budget. And it's... That's a little bit too high. It should be around 4%, so that an endowment will stay around for years to come. So we're going to work on getting that down. This year, an interesting thing is we purged our patron list. We took like 500 people off our patron list, and we still have 1,500 patrons, which is pretty good for the town size of Dorset. If you look at the budget, the biggest increase is in our buildings and grounds. And that's because we're participating... We've already started participating in the sidewalk renovation program. But we do have some windows that need to be replaced. We've applied for grants. We were turned down for one, but we now have a board member that is investigating, you know, new sources through grants. Any questions?
Is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Lindsay? Yes. Rosalie, if you could come over?
Hi, since you're right here. Now, my question is, when you talk about sidewalk renovation, you are willing to accept the marble sidewalks that the Dorset Marble Preservation Association would be installing in front of the library and feel that they're safe to walk on, and you'll be... You're prepared to maintain them in all weather conditions? Because that is your liability.
I think that's true, correct, Chip? Yes. Do you want to address that? Chip is the president of the board of Dorset. Are you a taxpayer?
I'm a taxpayer.
I think the real name is Chip Ams.
Chip Ams, yes. I'm on the board, and we have spent a great deal of time trying to get the sidewalk back into what we would call a safety situation. We've got a couple of holes, and I think we've probably lost a few patrons over the years there. But we are working with the group that is working throughout the town. And we've raised our own funds and are putting our own money in to hopefully have that repaired this summer. We've already contracted to buy the marble at a very good price. Marble is sitting there. If all goes well, we'll get started this spring. For many of you who know about the hole between the bank and the library, hopefully you won't need your swim fins after the summer is gone. We're staying with the marble because we want to keep the historic nature of the community the same way we put a slate roof on the building a number of years ago. We're trying to maintain the integrity there, being in the center of town. And the marble will be safe. It will be widened. There'll be a little better parking. Rob has worked well with the state to try to correct some parking issues there in front. So I think it's all very positive. We have the money earmarked. And if all goes well, it will be done sometime early this spring, depending on the contract and trade. So any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. All right. So they will be casting the first stone. Tough crowd, tough. Is there any further discussion on this Article 19? There being none. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $20,000 to the Dorset Village Library for the support of its services provided to Dorset residents? All those in favor of Article 19 signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
And disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it. Article 19 is passed. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $2,000 to the Greater North Shire Access Television, GNAT-TV, for the support of its services provided to Dorset residents? Which is that gentleman back there? All those in favor... Is there a motion in favor of Article 20?
So moved.
Bill LaBerge and Sally Gibney, who has her own show, also. Second. Article 20. Bill?
Yeah, so GNAT-TV is a local nonprofit. They're public access television station. And so what they do is provide access for 11 towns in the area. And the access that's provided is, first of all, to equipment and studio time. So anybody who wants to produce a TV show, you want to rent that equipment, you can do a date in the life of your cat, or you can do a community interest story. Sally Gibney has a fantastic show that runs. And actually, we're looking for a lot more people to produce shows. So if you have something that you'd like to do, please come and take advantage of the access. And the other access is the access to information. And, you know, right now, we're running a lot of programs where school news is being shown. There's some historical news. But the mainstay of what we provide is access to local government meetings. Last year, in seven of the towns, we recorded 281 shows. And Dorset is one of those. So it's access coverage to the select board meetings, school board meetings, planning commission meetings, two special meetings, and the town meeting, as you see back here. And what that means to everybody here is you hear there's a lot of interesting topics being discussed at these meetings, but you might not be able to make it. There's actually a pretty quick turnaround. You can find out what they were discussing at the select board meeting. If you have Comcast, you can watch it on one of the three access stations that they have. If you don't have Comcast, then you can watch it streaming from the website. So it really is access for everybody. And I don't have the exact numbers of... We can't tell how many people are watching on Comcast, but we can tell how many people are watching online. And it's almost 1,000 views this year. Mostly the select board guys, just so you know. So people are taking advantage of the access, and we look forward to continuing to provide these services.
Bill, you speak very fast. Did you say six or eight towns had its services?
Seven... There's 11 towns that it services, and they provide coverage for seven of the town's government boards.
Thank you. I just... We're a little quick. Is there anyone who wishes... Terry?
I don't... Can you hear me all right? I don't have cable, so I don't get a chance to see GNAT as often as I would like to. I also do not go out that late at night to stay at some of the meetings that I've listened to for the last year over this network. And I just want to say we should keep the cameras rolling because, believe me, there are some people that go to these meetings that are downright rude to the people that are working for next to nothing, that run this town. And to see board members as a group and individuals insulted and talked down to is something that I hope will cease to exist in a large part due to the work of this station. Thank you.
Okay, Terry. Is there someone else who wishes to speak to this article? Okay. We're all in favor of civil discourse. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $2,000 to the Greater North Shire Access Television, GNAT-TV, for support of its services provided to Dorset residents? All those in favor of Article 20 indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
And disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it. Article 20 is passed. Article 21. And I thank you for your patience and your... You learn a lot by going to these meetings. It's one thing... If you actually go to the public meetings, you actually learn a lot if you just go or watch on GINA. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $750 to the Collaborative for the Support of Its Substance-Free Events and Educational Programs to middle and high school youth? Well, not those of you. They've gone. So by petition. Is there a motion in favor of Article 21? Someone? Abbott Duran? And Sally Gibney seconded that? Ma'am? And just say your name, because I'm assuming you're not from Dorset.
No, I'm not from Dorset. My name is Mary Ann Morris. I'm the executive director of the Collaborative. I might have handed you a survey when you walked in. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But for the purpose of appropriations... Well, for the purpose of the Collaborative, we are a substance abuse prevention organization that works in the North Shire, throughout Bennington County and in the Mountain Community with schools, towns, businesses, towns and businesses around smoke-free zones and alcohol policy and things like that. But for the purpose of town appropriation, we're talking specifically about what we do with young people in this community. One of our largest programs that we work with is the Refuse to Use Program that Dorset School participates in, Long Trail School participates in, and BBA, as well as seven other schools in our area. That is a partnership with Stratton Mountain, Riley Rink, Viking Nordic, where young people come to five prevention education events. They sign a pledge to be substance-free. Their parents come and support them and also attend to events. And in exchange, they'll receive a season pass. So that works with about 27 volunteers to put on all of those substance-free events for about 400 young people in our community. We also do student empowerment groups at Burn Burton currently, and then up on the mountain. And those groups have gone to Montpelier and spoken to our representatives, local representatives, about things like eat cigarettes and smoke-free zones and things like that. They also put on dances and activities for their peers. We also hold a series of substance-free events at Riley Rink. Open skate nights, broom ball nights for high school students that are offered later in the evening. These substance-free events provide an alternative for the young people in our community. If you've lived your yawn long enough, you might have heard some young people say things like, "There's nothing to do here." And that's sort of the story all across the state and all across the country, really, for young people. But we try to provide that safe, substance-free area or activity for young people to go. for young people to go to and to do on a weekend night. We've done middle school dances. We've sent young people to Florida for Students Against Destructive Decision Conferences. Those are some of the things that we do, and I'd be happy to answer your questions. And I would thank you for filling out our survey, and I'll pick them up at the end of the night. That provides information that we use to help guide our events in the future.
Are there questions for Ms. Morris? There being none. Article 21. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $750 to the Collaborative for support of its substance-free events and educational programs to middle and high school youth? Indicate your approval of Article 21 by saying aye. Disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it. Article 21 is passed, and please do fill out those surveys and get it to Ms. Morris later. Article 22. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $15,000 to the Dorset Marble Preservation Association for the purpose of restoring Dorset's marble sidewalks? Is there a motion by Roger Squire? And seconded by Justine Cook? I don't know why I did that. I don't know why. Justine, half... 50% here, anyway. Roger?
Approximately 6,000 linear feet of marble sidewalks.
You're going to have to point it up, they can't hear you.
There are approximately 6,000 linear feet of marble sidewalks in Dorset. Wonderful old sidewalks that are the... that are part of Dorset's legacy. Most of these sidewalks are in dreadful shape. Some of them are dangerous. Some of them have actually disappeared. The purpose of the Dorset Marble Preservation Association is to try to bring some of these sidewalks back into safe and walkable condition. That's what we're doing. It costs about $100 of running foot to do the sidewalks, to restore the sidewalks. So we made two mistakes in 2015. One is we started a little bit late, so we didn't get the Route 30 project done that we planned to do. The other mistake we made was not asking for $600,000 to do the entire system all at one time. We figured there might be some pushback on that. I see Chris nodding his head on that. He already has a stink about paltering $100,000. The amount that we're asking for, $15,000, most of that will go to projects in East Dorset. We're committed to doing both sides of the mountain. We have the funds in hand to do the Route 30 project, and we'd like to get started in East Dorset when we can. We've had some success in getting private donations. But oddly enough, many people can't get their arms around the idea of private funding for something that looks like town infrastructure. So we depend on an appropriation. And we would definitely appreciate your vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Is there anyone who wishes to discuss or speak to this article, other than Roger? Terry?
Terry, you're going to give me trouble.
I'd just like to hear you say some more about the... Are they going to be set in the ground? Or are they going to be set in concrete, such as the sidewalk?
The question is, are they going to be set on the ground or in concrete?
Yeah, they're going to be set up here.
Roger?
I'd sort of like to not get into the visual aspects of this project. But in answer to your question, the Route 30 sidewalks will use cement. And my goal for this, or our goal for this, is to have these suckers safe and last forever. And easily, we have their snow easily removed.
So they're going to use cement like that one little track that's next to the church? That little area, right?
It's going to be quite different.
Quite different. Just answer this.
No, that's not.
Roger's not answering any more questions. I think... Why don't you give the microphone after that to Ms. Lynn Astaire? Behind you, I thought you were behind. I thought you were just insulting Roger. Try our layaway plan.
Well, my question is, I am not clear at all about who owns the sidewalks now or when they're replaced, and who pays to plow them, and who owns the sidewalks?
Well, I can answer that. About a third of the sidewalks are on private property. A third are on... Well, not a third, but quite a bit are on state roadway, and the town controls some of them. So it's a land of ownership. And the Dorset Marble Preservation Association pays for the clearing of the sidewalk on Route 30 and Down Shire Street. The Dorset Marble Preservation Association paid for... Paid last year for the snow removal on Route 30, and I believe around the Lockburg and down.
On the westerly side of Route 30.
The westerly side, yes. I assume you're still here, Terry.
Since you can stand up. Have you investigated things to keep the... or treatment for the marble? That I'm aware that the only thing slipperier than wet marble is marble with a snow on it. And is there a way to treat that? Or have you investigated a way to finish that marble so that it is rough and not slippery?
Yes, we are using approaches that will make the marble as non-slippery as possible. May I say at this point that two years ago, I attended a meeting at the Dorset Church where one of the speakers got up and spoke. And in the middle of his speaking, he experienced a cardiac arrest event, toppled over, and the meeting was... Had to be suspended for a couple of weeks. I'm not threatening that, but it's not... I've got one more question, Terry, pile up. Thank you, Terry.
I'm reminded important, here's the rule. I said what I said, and I meant what I meant. Are there any further questions that don't... With the risk of heart attack? Okay. All right, then. Article 22. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $15,000 to the Dorset Marble Preservation Association for the purpose of restoring Dorset's marble sidewalks? All those in favor of Article 22, indicate your approval by saying aye. Disapproval by saying nay. Article 22 is passed. Now, if we wanted them safe, we wouldn't make them. But they're pretty. Okay. Article 23. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $2,000 to the Dorset Players, Inc., to help defray the cost of repairing the Dorset Playhouse's east parking lot at 104 Cheney Road? Is there a motion in favor of Article 23? Elizabeth Corret, so we pay... And Bob Davidson, I seconded that. Ms. Corret?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Corret from East Dorset. I am an active member of the Dorset Players, both onstage and off. I'm also a former board member of the organization. And I'm here to ask for your help in getting our parking lot on both sides of the road there fixed up so that it will not deteriorate every year. We work on it every year, but we need to do more grading and more filling, get more gravel in. And as you all know, the Dorset Playhouse has been here for a long, long time. It started back in 1927. Our new building has been here for 15 years. It needs a lot of work. And we've been trying to find the money to help fix the roof and fix a leak in the back. And so I'm here to ask for your help in keeping that wonderful institution going. It's a longtime part of our community and a very important part of our community.
Is there someone else who wants to speak to this article? Article 23. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $2,000 to the Dorset Players, Inc., to help defray the cost of repairing the Dorset Playhouse's east parking lot at 104 Cheney Road? All those in favor of Article 23, indicate your approval by saying aye. Disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it. Article 23 is passed. And you're all ordered to see Planting and Sam the first two weekends of March. Book down those posters. Okay. Article 24 is by Australian ballot. It says... Says it is. By Australian ballot, so we don't need a motion, but we can talk about it. Shall the voters authorize the select board to eliminate the office of auditor as allowed by state statute? Outside audit is done each year as a replacement. So this thing you'd be voting on would not affect this year, but it would affect next year. So I think there's a write-in on the ballot for auditor. If you really don't like him, you can vote Terry in again. He's been auditor before. Everybody likes Terry, so don't vote for me, just... Well, you have been auditor, and I can't think of anything you haven't been. So is there any discussion on this? This is on your ballot tomorrow, the select board, or anybody on the select board want to speak to this?
We have a question.
Oh, yes. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Alan Sullivan from McNamara Road in Dorset. When I was reading the warning before the meeting...
Could you bring up the mic?
In reading the warning before the meeting, this stuck out as something that was not particularly good government. I have not been able to attend the last few select board meetings, but I do read the minutes, and I haven't seen any reference to this being put on the ballot tomorrow. And I'm kind of curious as to why it's there. I know the... This publicly elected position has not been filled for a few years. I know as well that there's a CPA firm that does do an audit for the town. But it is a publicly elected position accountable to the people, and it seems to me good government to keep that position, unless there's a real compelling reason to eliminate it. The Vermont League of Cities and Towns did a study relating to the position. There's a 30-page report that they issued. And it starts by stating the town auditor plays a vital role in preserving the democratic nature of Vermont's municipal government.
Mr. Sullivan, can you grab the mic? Just take it away.
By ensuring that local officers are accountable for the expenditure of taxpayers' monies. And at the end of the report, it's a 30-page report, and the end of the report, the conclusion of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns was to the effect that local elected auditors play a vital role in municipal government, although the office of the auditor is not often a visible position. The auditor's role is very visible and should form the foundation of the electorate's decision about the proposed budget for whether to reelect the various municipal officials charged with spending and managing the taxpayers' money. Again, I'm not understanding the compelling reason to eliminate this position. I know that there is a CPA firm that does an audit, but they work at the direction of the town and of the select board.
I hear your question. Is there someone on the select board who wishes to address this, what the reason is? Or how does... Chris?
Sure. What's that saying? I know. So it did come from saying, yeah, I have to give credit where credit is due. But we've survived for the last few years without an auditor. And for longer than that, we had to use an auditing firm to take care of the town. That audit is available as a public document. You can read it. And they will point out if there are issues and problems. I mean, that's their job. I would say the only thing that we have not done is we have not changed auditing firms. And I would encourage the board to change the auditing firm in an upcoming year, because just regular business practice, you should change your auditing firm. About every three years, change. I think it's been nine years since we've had the auditing firm that we have right now. But, that being said, we've survived the last two years, and we can't find anybody to run for it. That's part of the problem. So if we don't have anyone to run for it, and after a period of time, we thought it prudent to do away with the position. That's right, we need three.
We need three auditors, so three people would have to be written in this year.
Well, the statute only talks to one. I know it states in the report that it's three, but the statute specifically only requires that there be one.
Right.
And it sounds to me that the reason for doing this is a matter of housekeeping. And I don't think that's a reason to eliminate a publicly elected position accountable to the people whose responsibility is to provide some level of oversight. If you look at the work of the state auditor, it's... Mr. Heffernan, it's a very, very important position in state government. It holds...
You're not going to be heard, Mr. Sullivan. You have to just pick it up.
It holds basically the select board accountable. I think the select board enjoys great confidence by the town now. But I can see a time when the select board might not. And we'd be looking around saying, "Where's our auditor?" And unless there's a compelling reason to do this, I don't think we should eliminate this position.
Thank you.
I can't speak to that a bit. Our current auditing firm... Obviously, it's an important part of making sure that what we do is in check, that we don't give people the right or the ability to take funds. And I can tell you that the auditing firm has approached us on occasion and said, "You need to change the way you do things." And so we have changed the way we do things in the town, based on what the auditor has told us. Not this auditor, but the auditing firm that we have that comes to see us every year.
Ms. Sullivan?
I'm Linda Sullivan, and I'm also a public auditor.
Could you take that away from the poll? Just pick it up again, and then write it in.
I'm a public auditor as well. PCA will be registered. And I want to clarify something. An outside auditing firm that does audits for financial statements and reporting only is entirely different than the internal auditor. There is no complimentary position. One does CPA reporting as an external reporting, and they get information from the inside. So while they may make recommendations, they're not doing your internal control, your systems, and analysis that way. So there's two different auditing functions. And I believe that an internal auditor is a position, like Mr. Sullivan said, that should not be taken lightly and just eliminated because you haven't had somebody run. Thank you.
Okay, this is on the ballot, Australian ballot tomorrow. And I don't think that there's anybody who ran officially with a petition. So you can write in, who you wish, Linda Sullivan, or whoever you wish. But this position will be... There will be a position for at least one more year. Abba Duran, if you could...
Article 24 as written doesn't say Australian ballot. So is that an error?
Well, I was looking at the beginning of the town meeting. It says Articles 2, 6, 7, and 24 will be voted by Australian ballot. So my mind would have been part of the petition or motion by the select board, but it is by Australian ballot tomorrow. Okay? And Ruth, are you coming for the next one, or...
No, I have a question. If it is eliminated by Australian vote, can it be reinstated? The position be reinstated by the same process?
Mr. Brooks says yes. Okay. Okay, moving on to Article 25. And this is advisory only. Chris Brooks spoke to it earlier. And remember, when we get to, there'll be other business. Somebody wanted to talk about energy for a little bit, and then we'll recess briefly, and then for the school meeting. Mr. Dear, Mr. Tajin, I saw you here someplace. I know they're here and they'd love to have you here for their town meeting, for their school meeting. So Article 25, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $6,300 to support the Northshire Economic Development Effort to be implemented by the partnership formerly known as the Manchester Mountains Chamber of Commerce? This is advisory only. So Chairman of our Select Board, Chris, was speaking about this earlier. Is there any further discussion on Article 25? Lee Romano?
Just he just hit right behind him.
My name is Perry Como. Anyway, I just wanted to applaud the Select Board for the position they're taking on the funding. I am a board member of the Manchester Mountains Chamber of Commerce. I've been for quite some time. The partnership, which is what the Chamber of Commerce will be moving towards, has been involved in the development of a plan for quite some time. The NEDS study, as well as the Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone study, all pointed to the same thing, and that is that money needs to be invested in our economic long-term health. And the state's not going to do anything to help us with that. And if we can join forces, the way we seem to be, I think it's going to make a big difference. And I just wanted to add that this is a 16-community-wide effort, so it is not just Manchester and Dorset. And every town is voting on it in one way or another. It's all prorated based on tax base. And what this amounts to, to the Dorset taxpayer, is very insignificant compared to the long-term potential. And once again, I applaud the Select Board for putting it in the budget. Thank you.
Just Dean Cook. Just a quick question about the money being raised. Is that for a salary position or is it going toward like the effort to be implemented? Like how is the money translating?
The organization's structured.
Lee said, what is the $6,300 for? Justine asked if that was for a salary position and Lee answered, it's for structural organization.
The organization will have payroll within the structure.
And payroll within the structure.
For, and what length of time? Like is that a year or a couple of years?
The plan is for an ongoing organization that's going to have payroll. It's going to have marketing expenses. And it's going to be a process that's not going to take place overnight. I think economic development is a long-term position. The destination marketing, all of which ties into economic development, takes a commitment. And we're looking at realistically a three- to five-year timeframe for this thing to really take hold. So yes, there will be salary positions. You need talent that knows what they're doing to have the kind of impact that we will need to have in order for it to make the kind of difference it should.
Thank you. So again, that's going to be by Australian ballot. No, it's not. It's advisory only. So it is advisory only, but they do want your input. So I'll repeat it. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $6,300 to support the Northshire Economic Development? Did I not make that a motion? Did I forget that? Easily could have. So I'm going to say that Lee Romano made the motion and that somebody seconded it. Jim Salzgier seconded it. And, no, thank you for the housekeeping. I'm getting a little punch drawn. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $6,300 to support the Northshire Economic Development Effort to be implemented by the partnership formerly known as the Manchester of the Mountains Chamber of Commerce? Advisory only. All those in favor of Article 25 indicate your approval by saying aye. Your disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it. Article 25 is passed. Article 26 is to transact any other business to properly come before this meeting. And I think Abbott had something, and there was somebody approached me before this phase. He's briefly, and then we'll recess after that. Go ahead.
I didn't know quite where to put it, so I just thought I'd put it here. I've got two issues that I wanted to talk about quickly. One is on this long list of items, some of which seem to many to be a small dollar amount. I just wanted to compliment the folks who are sitting over there for asking that people come and tell us what's happening in our community. The second thing I look at is the dollars that are asked for versus the number of hours of volunteerism that people are putting in. So that, if the dollar amount is small in comparison to the amount of dollars that are going in, it tells us, it's our token support, really, for what's happening in the community. The real support comes that every one of us, according to our ability to pay, still have to look at whether or not we make donations to these organizations that are often doing the jobs that nobody else wants to do. You can make donations to an art gallery. You can make a donation to other things that are far more flashy. But sometimes, we also have a responsibility to support the organizations that do the jobs that we wouldn't want to do, in so many cases, to the people who need it. So these things that are on the list is an opportunity to know these organizations that are running in our town. And it's a town's support. But the real money that goes in their budget needs to come from each of you making a personal donation to the level that you're able. So that's sort of number one. The number two thing is Vermont is aging. They have a problem with jobs and for younger people to stay in the community. Good jobs so that they can stay. It is a known fact that Vermont's getting older. You're seeing a lot of things on this list having to do with services so that people can stay in their homes. That's a big deal. It's not all going to fall on the town. It's going to fall on these various agencies. And for people to stay in their home, I can't even begin to tell you how much of a difference that makes in their quality of life. So when we look at whether it be sidewalks, whether it be someone providing neighbor-to-neighbor for visiting, whether it be meals on wheels, whether it be some of these other things, remember, all of our towns here in Vermont have a problem. It's getting older. And we are going to have these things showing up on budgets, either in the town budget or on these voted items, to help support our older folks, of which I'm getting there as well, to remain in their homes. It's a big deal. Don't underestimate the value to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Fahey briefly, and then we'll have a recess.
I'm Nancy Fahey, a member of the Dorset Energy Committee. And I just wanted to say, if you had leaky pipes or a chilly winter or drafty house, we have a big bargain for you tonight. If you haven't had an energy audit yet, because it's town meeting day, Neighbor Works, or Heat Squad, which is part of Neighbor Works, is offering an energy audit for $100 instead of $150. And we have a table in the back of the room that you can sign up. There's a bowl of candy there, too, if that'll help you come. So I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you very much. Just one thing.
Oh, sure. During the break, there's some surveys in the back table here, and there's also some areas, the same surveys on the front table coming in. It's for a solid waste district that the town alliance, that the town recently formed with. So we're asking folks to take those home and try to fill them out tonight and answer those questions and give us a little input as to that process. Thank you.
All right. And remember, we're not going home. We're just recessing. Yes, Mr. Pincenall? Sure, sure. When we're on, she's getting ready. She has her surveys, too.
Yes, my name is Dan Pincenall. I'm on one of the predential committees in town with the fire department and water, but I'm not representing them tonight. I'm just coming up with my same spiel that I've done, I think, probably six years now, I think. And that is, we still don't have the equalization. We may be getting a little bit closer, but anybody that knows me also knows I'm not a very patient person. I can't stress enough, these selectmen that are up at the table, no matter who is going to be up here, they can't control this situation. The only thing that's going to control this situation and make the wheels start going forward are you people that are sitting here and you people and the people that haven't come to these meetings start going to the predential committee meetings, no matter what side you're on. Go to those things, tell those people what you want. Don't let five or six, eight people control such a large amount of money, because there's a lot of things that the town wants to do in the not-too-distant future. And those plans are going to be on hold until we can get a grasp on the fire departments, the water systems, whatever areas we can find money from. It's not going to happen unless the people in town start showing up for these meetings and start voicing their opinion and telling them what they want, because these systems belong to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Danny. And with that, I think we'll recess just for five minutes to 9:10, when we will start the school district meeting. Stick around. There's good things to be said. Four people.
Who's going with you? Yeah. Okay. Because I was thinking...
The school district is on page 72.
A little bit. End of it.
Okay, for you intrepid souls who have stayed, and I do think it's, you're intrepid and wonderful for doing so, it's normally just the accident of which meeting comes first. But Carl, Carl, sit down, sit down, stay. Just, you won't take that one?
Now you're really staying.
I know. With that old T-shirt saying, what happens in Dorset stays in Dorset, but nothing much after happens in Dorset. Now, all right. The legal voters in Dorset Town District, Dorset, Vermont, are hereby notified and warned to make it to Dorset School Monday, February 29, 2016, at 7:00 PM to transact any business not involved in voting by Australian ballot on Tuesday, March 1, 2016, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Dorset School to transact voting business involving voting by Australian Article 1, shall the voters approve payment of the announced tuition rate of Burnburn Academy in the amount of $16,250 for the 2016-2017 school year for those pupils who are residents of the town of Dorset and attend Burnburn Academy? It's our motion in favor. Rita Mary Rita Manley and Terry Tyler seconding. And Mark Tajin is here. He is not a resident of Dorset either. Is there any opposition to Mark? Headmaster of Burnburn speaking. Mark, feel free and please just take the mic right off that pole. And you can turn around and speak to people, just keep opposed to your lips.
Okay. How's that?
Great.
Should I come up?
No, that'd be fine.
Okay.
It's just those chickens now. Stand in front and the camera can see.
Okay, here we go. And I'll stand to the side so I don't block anyone's view. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank you, those of you who've stayed. I know it was a little more crowded about 15 minutes ago as I was coming in. Everyone was leaving. I'm trying not to take that personally. What I would tell you is I'd like to take a minute to put $16,250 in context. And it's really in the context of Act 46 and the allowable growth rates that have been placed on all the schools throughout the BRSU and in fact, all the schools throughout the state. Our tuition is going up 1.88%. Again, to put it a little bit in context, our contracted teacher salaries are going up 2.8%. Our benefits are going up 8%. So we've got 2.8% salary increases, 8% benefit increases, 1.8%, 1.88% tuition increase. Obviously, those numbers don't add up. What keeps me up at night right now is the gap between, the gap created by those numbers. I have a series of hopes, and I'm hoping to turn these hopes into reality between now and when we start the next school year. One of my hopes is that we close that gap through increased enrollment. We are at about 675 students right now. If we stay steady, then we haven't gained anything. If we decline, we obviously lose even more. My hope is to grow a little bit more to help close that gap. A second hope is to increase our international student population. Our international students total, about 60. What they bring to our school is an international, a global flavor in this little corner of Vermont. They give students, I think, a greater sense of the world. They increase the academic diversity of the school. They increase the cultural diversity. So they have educational benefit. In addition, they pay tuition and bring dollars from faraway countries and put them right here in Manchester or Dorset. We have about 60. I'm hoping to increase that by somewhere between three and five students. That will also help close the gap. And the third thing we do is raise funds privately. We raise about a million dollars a year in annual fund. It's not a great fundraising environment right now. There's a lot of uncertainty out there. There's global economic questions. The stock market is going up and down. And some people, if you can believe this, are nervous about where the presidential election is going. And I mean, I say that half in jest, but also in seriousness, in that all this uncertainty does create concern for people and therefore limits giving. So it's not a great fundraising environment. That said, I have a hope. And my hope is that regardless of all of that, I do know year in and year out, people support education. And so I'm hoping that we can actually increase on our million dollars a year in fundraising. And in addition, as you well know, we do a lot of capital fundraising. So all of our projects, whether it's the mountain campus or the turf field, those are privately funded through some very generous benefactors as well. So you put that all together, and the goal is to be able to continue to be the school that I think this community counts on, and to ask you for 1.88%. It was very much done in concert with the BRSU and with the notion that we wanted to do our part to make sure that we weren't putting too much pressure, or too much pressure wasn't put, on Dorset School, on MEMS, on Courier Elementary School, on Floodbrook, on all the schools that send students to Burnburn Academy. So that's my little spiel. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark, I will say that there were several students from the mountain campus who did fulfill their requirement because they were here for town meeting, but you didn't see them because they took off.
I actually was here earlier and I did see them, but I'm disappointed they're not here now. So they're not going to get an A. And if they're watching.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this article? Jim Salzgier did tell me that the state average is 14.7 or a little bit around there, but that Burnburn is the lowest of the independent schools. That's what you had said. Article 1, shall the voters approve payment of the announced tuition rate of Burnburn Academy in the amount of $16,250 for the 2016-2017 school year for those pupils who are residents of the town of Dorset and attend Burnburn Academy? All those in favor of Article 1 signify your approval by saying aye. Your disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it, Article one is passed. Thank you, Mr. Tashin.
Thank you very much.
Article two. Shall the voters approve payment of sixteen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, the same as Burnburn's, in tuition of, in tuition support to the Long Trail School for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year for pupils grades nine through twelve who are residents of the town of Dorset and attend the Long Trail School? Is there a motion in favor of this? Terry Tyler and seconding Janet Chandler. Mr. Dear, Stephen Dear, our headmaster of the Long Trail.
Thank you so much, Kevin. And thank all of you. You know, when I came into this position four years ago, I made some commitments that our school was going to do the very best we could to be a part of this community. And not only be a part of this community, but the importance of the educational value the citizens of this town was paid. And we're very proud, as you'll see in the letter that I wrote to the residents of Dorset, that we have spent a great deal of time on our academic rigor, being an international baccalaureate school, and that has trickled all the way down to our sixth grade program. Secondly, in terms of our community service, Roger Squire came to me about a year and a half ago and talked about the quarry and what that means to this community. And he and I had a chance to meet with Dick McDonough. And we made a decision as a school to be the keepers of the quarry. So, you know, our students are very proud of the fact that they're out there in the spring, in the summer, and in the fall to help with other citizens. Mark, also, he has been great with his students coming out to work with us on the quarry, but being involved in that. We're offering a number of programs now to senior citizens. And I would tell you, we're so proud of the fact, we just had, two weeks ago, a program for all senior citizens to come in and learn technology from our students. And I see, we had people attend, excellent. And I would tell you, it was so oversubscribed, we still have probably three more groups of twenty we're going to have to have to come in and to have that program. But all these are free of charge. We work a lot with the Green Mountain Academy of Lifelong Learning, who does amazing work, I believe, in our area, and we will continue to do that. The board made a decision a little over a year ago, actually a little under a year ago because it was the week after this meeting, unfortunately, agreed that for all students grades nine through twelve, that we would offer the same tuition rate. So there is no differential anymore for nine through twelve. And our rate for the students that are in sixth through eighth grade actually is, we've gone up by one percent this year. So there is seventeen thousand, nine eighty-six. So for high school students, we accept the same tuition as other schools in the area. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, but I do want to thank you all. I see so many faces that are around the school now and that's exciting to me. We want you to know that we're here for you and for the citizens of this town. So I thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Dear? Who's Dear to us? Shall the voters approve payment of sixteen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars in tuition support to the Long Trail School for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year for pupils in grades nine through twelve who are residents of the town of Dorset and attend the Long Trail School? All those in favor of Article two signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it, Article two is passed. Thank you, Stephen. And I was a little remiss before, but these people over here are the school board and your principal of the Dorset School on the end. This is Rosanna Moran and Vicki Haskins and Jim Salzgiver and Jim Miranda and Jennifer Allen. And this is Dorset, this is David Chandler, who's not here for various things. They all do a wonderful job. Article three. Shall the voters authorize the school board to borrow money by issuance of notes not in excess of anticipated revenue for the fiscal year July one, two thousand sixteen through June thirty, two thousand seventeen? Is there a motion in favor of this? Abbott Duran and a second by Skip Dickinson. Okay, I'm assuming there's no discussion on that one. So shall the voters authorize the school board to borrow money by issuance of notes not in excess of anticipated revenue for the fiscal year July one, two thousand sixteen through June thirty, two thousand seventeen? All those in favor of Article three signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it, Article three is passed. Article four. Shall the voters appropriate the sum?
No, it's actually, it's a part of the budget.
Yep, we can address it if you'd like.
It's included in the full budget figure, so.
We separately warned, can I explain it?
Well, I have to put the motion in play first. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to the Buildings and Grounds Reserve Fund? So I need just a motion and a second so we can discuss this, I believe. Ruth Stewart and Clarissa Lennox. Okay? Now, Jennifer, you can speak to this, I'm a little confused.
Just in the spirit of transparency, we separately warned this article, we have some upcoming maintenance issues for the school. I think we have one floor refinish left in here. This gym floor needs to be replaced, it's going to be about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Hundred and fifteen.
Hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And obviously, this isn't a new building and we are replenishing a fund that's pretty much depleted at this time. And we warned it separately, like I said, just to make sure that everybody was aware of it and it wasn't buried in the budget, which is very easy to do if any of you took a look at that budget, it's lengthy and detailed. So if you have any questions about that, we, I can give you a little bit more information about the budget. We are putting forward a property tax cut this year as part of our budget that includes this transfer of funds to the Building and Grounds Funds. It does not impair that, that cut you all be expecting this year.
Okay, my confusion was that we voted some years ago that the school budget would be on Australian ballot, so is this?
Good question.
If they voted no on this, if you voted yes to the budget, you were not going to vote for this?
Well, I guess technically, if you voted no on this, then, you know, we could adjust the budget for it.
Well...
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget tomorrow, so I think this is sort of advisory because I don't think we have the right to vote on this on the floor.
Correct.
Because we voted previously to vote on the school budget.
I don't think we thought of that.
The reason we vote for Burnburn and the reason we vote for Long Trail School is because it's above the state average of fourteen-seven, so we have to vote on the floor. But I think that we're not allowed to vote on anything that's already in the budget on the floor.
Let's check the minutes from last year.
Abbott Duran, while we're thinking of that. I don't think we can vote on this for...
I recognize that with facilities, there are periods of time of minimal maintenance and then big expenditures. Things don't come a little at a time when you build your buildings. But my question is, a fire department, other places that have to buy big things, graders, et cetera, on a periodic basis, they put a certain amount into the fund each year to help build it. And they don't come to the town all in one year to say, oops, it's zero, put it all back to a hundred thousand. So my question is, if this is, it's, sounds like it's not a fire, you're not going to be asking a hundred thousand dollars a year for the fund. So if that's true, why, why so much all at once right now? Why refund it in one year?
The actual answer, the, you know, our Building and Grounds...
No, I think, I think it's just you gotta get right and kiss it.
Okay, the Building and Grounds Fund has historically been, you know, we've actually tried to build up to have a, have a good, solid, five-year plan for the building. We've, we've been working on that over time and we've actually had a pretty good idea of what, you know, what kind of amounts we're going to need in the future. However, when you have a lot of pressure on your school budget in certain recent years, frankly, you, you know, you try to hold off for a better opportunity. That's kind of what we had this year. We've, in the past, you know, the truth is, a lot of the money in the Building and Grounds Fund in past years, whenever there's a year where there's a, where there's a surplus at the end of the year, you squirrel away in the Building and Grounds Fund. We haven't had a surplus for a number of years. So that's actually, you know, tended to deplete the amount. We knew, you know, last year we actually added thirty thousand, you know, to try to be reasonable, we knew we had some roof sections to do. We've, we've known for probably four years that we've got this hundred thousand dollar gym floor and kind of, you know, crossed our fingers. And, you know, in this year, frankly, the factors that led into the budget, you know, we ended up with a favorable circumstances to, to be able to, you know, to bring that, that fund up to a level that we thought it should be anyway. It's certainly not, you know, overfunded it yet, you know, even with a hundred thousand in addition. But we, you know, had favorable circumstances that allowed us to get it back up into the neighborhood that it should be. We know, we actually know what our expenses are, you know, we projected our expenses out and, you know, this is, this is going to put us, we aren't going to need another hundred thousand, but we're probably going to continue to have to add unless we have surpluses, you know, a bit each year, more like the thirty thousand last year.
I, it was pointed out that we had this last year, I kind of missed the boat last year, probably shouldn't have allowed it because it should be part, it is part of the general budget that we're voting on by Australian ballot. But if we treat this as advisory, we can vote on it anyway. And that's, I think, what we ought to do. So in an advisory capacity, I believe, shall the voters appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand to the Building and Grounds Reserve Fund? Indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Disapproval by saying nay. The ayes have it, Article four is passed, I believe, advisory. Article five is to discuss the budget to be voted upon by Australian ballot. And I didn't know if anyone in the school wishes to speak to that or if we're all, want to be approached individually after the board meeting or Jennifer?
I, I had a few words I wanted to mention about the budget.
Sure.
But also about Act forty-six. So could I cover both at the same time and save everybody?
Well, it's under other...
Yeah.
Yes, I think actually Article six is to transact other, other business, so it's just a streamlining, but I just want to make sure there's no questions in the budget first.
Sure, yep, absolutely. So unless your head has been in the sand the last couple of weeks, I think you've probably noticed our neighbor really struggling with their budget and the cap that was included under Act forty-six. We have been tremendously lucky in our community to be the beneficiary of an increased student population and that is not the case for our neighbor. And part of that blessing has been the ability to pass on a tax cut of approximately nine cents, still a moving target. This includes the hundred thousand dollar warrant article to start rebuilding the Building and Grounds Fund. We are very, very fortunate in this regard and we are aware as a board, we never, ever count on something like this falling in our lap. We've never had a cap quite like this before. And we know that as easily as this came to us, it can be taken away next year. So we are always very, very careful about our budgeting and it is, as it should be, very tight and well-regulated budget. And as Jim spoke to earlier, when you look at trying to replenish the Buildings and Grounds Fund, when you're not allowed to raise your budget at all, and we've been level-funded many years recently, it's really quite extraordinary to be able to do this this year. And I feel very grateful personally that we're not having the same tussles that our neighbor is so visibly having. One of the other things that comes down with Act forty-six is the mandate that we must be unifying governance across districts. And part of that process has been the establishment of a merger study committee. The study committee is going to be composed of seventeen different members from the neighbors that we have, that we've identified as logical and nearby partners. We have something in common, we're going to be studying this over the coming year, first meeting approximately April. Our three appointees, one of which will be a board member, need to be appointed soon. And I so wish that we had had the opportunity to talk to the whole community at the beginning of this meeting rather than now because we need your help. And all of a sudden, the pool of candidates to be on this committee has diminished by about eighty percent. So I'm hoping they all went home to watch this on GNAT at some point, that you will have picked up a letter at the desk that speaks to what we're looking for in terms of the, you know, a member of our community to come work with our board member, Jim Miranda, the board appointed earlier last week on Tuesday. And we really appreciate him stepping up. This is going to be a significant project, you're really picking who your dance partners are going to be. And this is probably, we're hoping the results of this committee will come forth to town meeting next year. If not, it will be a special meeting.
Possibly before then.
Maybe before then. And so this may be the last time that we're all sitting before you is the Dorset School Board, which is sentimentally hard for, I think, a lot of us to take. But we hope to go forward and make some strong partnerships with our neighboring districts and we hope to go into it with open eyes and we need your help. So David Chandler did sign a letter that was at the desk that asks for your, your help. And if you know someone you think would be a great candidate for this committee, give them a little poke and see if they won't throw their hat in the ring. The next two committee members will be reviewed by and appointed by the board at their next meeting, our hope is. And we would really prefer it not just be board members, but rather members of the community who have some broader experiences and maybe historical knowledge of how our communities worked together in the past. This is state mandated, it is not elective at this point. And so we hope to just go forward and be as effective as we can be and do our homework, basically. And we don't want anyone to be surprised, so having a broad swath of representatives from the community will ensure more that the word is out and that people are brought along. I had a teacher tell, say to us recently at this board meeting, if you don't know what's happening with Act forty-six, by now you probably just don't want to know because you can't really get away from it. But if that's not the case for you and you still would like to come up to speed on what's happening with Act forty-six, The Manchester Journal has done an amazing job, both reporting on Act forty-six and creating a database of documents that would be helpful for you to review. And then, of course, any of us are always available, probably easiest by email to communicate with us. And what'd you say, Jim?
GNAT has...
Oh, GNAT has been amazing taping these meetings, so we are very much appreciative of them. I just wanted to touch real quick on the fact that our superintendent of nine years, Dan French, has resigned and is going to return to teaching, which is a blessing for his students. He is just a tremendous leader and has accomplished so much with our supervisory union. And we hate to see him go. We knew he would have, we would have big shoes to fill with his departure. And we still have, the search committee that's being led by Jim Salzgiver has not yet identified a candidate that possesses all the attributes that we are looking for. And so we do have an interim stepping in, Jackie Wilson, who's the assistant superintendent right now, and she'll be filling in as the search continues.
The search will probably restart in the fall.
So we are looking at different methodologies to address, to identify candidates. And the SU is in such outstanding shape, Dan's just left an amazing organization. And the leadership, the staff that he's developed into leadership roles there are very confidently taking over for the year and we trust that that will be a successful process. So that's about it. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Obviously, this Act forty-six has put a tremendous burden on school boards across the state, including this one. And it's been, you know, we're engrossed in it right now. So if we can do anything to help you understand it better or if you would like to join us, please do so. Thank you.
Since, as Jennifer pointed out, this might be the last town meeting that the band is together. I think we round, oh, there's a round of applause. We might be joined with another...
Yeah, we, after, after it's voted by the voters, then we have a little time to implement it, so you may actually get stuck with it.
I do know that...
Can I make one more point real quick, just on the whole outcome of the study committee?
Sure.
It's really important this community understands this. Once the board appoints these members to this committee, we are, we're hands-off. The committee goes forward, they come up with their own proposal, it comes directly to you. And so we'll do everything that we can to help facilitate you all knowing as much as you can. The meetings will all be open, you're all welcome to attend any of the merger committee meetings, but we have nothing to do with it after you are appointed with Jim to participate.
Unless there's any other business, I turn your attention to by Australian ballot, Article seven. I think we've talked about it, but before we get to that, there's no contest... I think we've talked about it, but before we get to that, there's no contested positions. I believe that Vicky Haskins and Jennifer are up for the two- and three-year terms, which may or may not be a two- or three-year term. But Article Seven is, again, by Australian ballot. Shall the voters of the school district approve the school board to expend five million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of fifteen thousand, twenty-nine dollars per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is two point seven-four percent lower than spending for the current year. Is there anyone who wishes to discuss the budget? Jennifer's touched on highlights, I'm sure they've entertained any questions you have afterwards to... That being the case, I'll entertain a motion to recess this meeting until tomorrow, when the polls open at seven in the morning. Is it, somebody want to do that? Mr. Smith and Stuart, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disapprove, we're out of here. Thank you very much.